You're recording.
Good evening. Township of Lacey Caucus meeting, March 25th, 6:30 PM. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and Court of Republic laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised by Park Press and The Beacon, and time was posted on the bulletin board and showing the time and place of this meeting. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, special event. Lacey Township High School Rotary Club Car Show, May 15th, 2021.
Rotary Club is looking to host hopefully an annual car show in conjunction with the high school through our members and the Vintage Auto Club on Saturday, May 15th, with a reigning date of May 16th. Approvals have been granted by the school. We just need approvals from the township, and of course, they will most likely be posting a few of those lawn signs in advance of the events around town.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Item number two, cannabis legislation. It's an item that we have to talk about and come to some type of arrangement as our 180-day clock is ticking. So recently, the governor approved recreational marijuana for sale. There is an opportunity to opt out for that. It's up to the governing body, and so we'll open it up for discussion among my colleagues. Committee man McKenna.
I've been going, I've been struggling with this for a while now, going back and forth, and the more I thought about it, the more people I heard from, I'm of the opinion now that I think we should ban it outright in town.
Committee man Julian, excuse me, deputy mayor Julian.
I really have no comment right at this time. I really haven't read into it too much, mayor, other than, you know, a few things here, but I'd like to read a little bit more into it and see.
Understood. Committee man Deacon.
I think, I know there's a lot of pending legislation. The issue I have with the law that was passed, because of course, and most people I've spoken to, was about how it affects those under 21. Last year, when we passed the ordinance against recreational marijuana, we did it, you know, and as I had mentioned, I thought we were kind of jumping the gun. So I know that the clock is ticking, but until all this is ironed out, I don't want to do anything.
Committee man McDonald.
Sure. My feelings on it are this, is that it's my understanding that something has hit the governor's desk today with regards to the underage, and I think before we make any touch on that, because that's my big bone. I have a real problem with that. I have a real problem with putting our police, who are doing their job, making them criminals. I think that's wrong. So until that gets ironed out, I think we just put this whole thing on hold. And I gotta believe it's gonna get ironed out in the next couple of weeks, because you got an election coming up in November, the governor's up for reelection, and I haven't talked to anybody that's happy about the way that thing, that whole bottom part of that bill, it was written. So I think we put this thing on hold until we, until that's ironed out, and if it doesn't get ironed out, then we'll just have to deal with it down the road, that's all.
Get the facts.
Yeah, let's get the facts.
Let's get the facts. We didn't do that last year.
Right.
You know, we passed an ordinance prior to the legislation being, you know, prior to the vote, number one.
And I will say this, I think if the, you know, Lacey Township went 63-36 for recreational marijuana, had they known what the law was, there's no way that passes. I honestly, truly believe, and I don't think it passes the state that way, and I think that's why there's a bunch of pushback here. And I think they're gonna try to straighten this mess out.
So I guess I'll expand just a tad. I mean, I don't begrudge anybody their vote. I know this is, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion on what they want to do. But I remain largely opposed to the Phil Murphy agenda. I disagree pretty much with what both of you said in regards to the, you know, children, you know, underage, underage smoking. I don't agree that cops can be charged for investigating, that parents can't be notified, you know, they sort of rushed this through so much that there's gonna be changes. I know that they have discussed them today, and, but I also know we could change our minds at a later date and opt in if that were the case. And that's, but I'm still of the opinion that we shouldn't do it.
Well, I want to say-
And further, and I also do not agree that the, you know, a good percentage, I mean, this is, at the end of the day, this is just, it's not about decriminalizing anything, it's just, it's just for money. A large portion of the tax on marijuana is a social justice tax, which I don't agree with either. They're up to like, I don't know, some, as the price of, as the price of marijuana goes down, the social justice tax goes up. I think it go as high as like 60% or something like that, or 30%. So I'm just opposed to the whole agenda behind us, and so I don't, I don't think it's in the township's best interest.
Committee man McKenna, you and I have talked about this at length, and that, you know, we both kind of agree if they just decriminalized it, they'd have been much better off, and move forward much easier, much better, and go in that direction, but for some reason, they chose to do it this way, and it's a mess, so.
So I think an interesting point, in case anyone has heard on the news, New York has legislation. I'd be curious to see what your legislation looks like. I know that one of the amendments they're talking about as far as New Jersey is allowing people to grow their own. So again, it's just, right now, you know, rather than making, and guess what? Who knows what they might do as a relationship with the population, but I just don't want to do a knee-jerk reaction like we've done before.
Yeah, I can understand that. Regardless, of course, I have the same concerns as all the gentlemen up here, especially with the police, the way they're, you know, they're proposed to be treated, purported to be treated, a third-degree crime. Right now, you can enforce anti-smoking of cigarettes on the board more than you can if a young person lights a joint, and that's just wrong at its core. I mean, so people know where I stand, I think, notwithstanding the way our police have gotten treated in this bill, and mistreated really is the right word. I still don't think it's good public policy. I'll go into a couple of reasons why. I've spoken to people at the school board, municipal alliance folks. People have heard me speak up here, I'll be really brief, some of the reasons why, and it's happened in other states. There has been gang infiltration. When pot is legalized, we charge a large tax. Gang members don't have to put up with that, so it's gonna be comparison shopping like anywhere else. I don't want to see our residential and commercial property values affected. The reason why property values a thousand dollars a square foot in some towns like Spring Lake and Seagurt is they don't have stuff like this. I don't think it's good policy, public safety-wise, I don't think it's good public health policy. That's just me. Some of the other people that agree with me, Ocean County Chiefs of Police Association, Ocean County Commissioners, Municipal Alliance and all its membership, certain school board members that have confided in me but really can't speak publicly, they were going to write a letter to our governing body, but since they don't meet until mid-April, they're unable to do that, and I refuse to, I respect them, and it's a sovereign body, elected officials, so I will not speak for them, but I can assure you that I've been texted and emailed, and that several people do agree with the prohibition ordinance. I would also submit, there's broad support among other educators. Our chief of police had said he's gonna need an extra $100,000 just to enforce it. You can go on and on and on, but I think, so you know why I'm against it. I think what the town, if the town wants, if this town wants, and I agree with committee man McDonald, people didn't know what they were willing for, had they read the minutia of it. If this town wants a prohibition ordinance, it's up to you to ask every person up here, because if they don't support a prohibition ordinance, then they support recreational marijuana. You're not half-pregnant, there's no way around this. So I would support putting the prohibition ordinance in for recreational marijuana in our town. I'd rather have somebody purchase it somewhere else, to the north, south, or west of us. It can't be to the east, because that's the ocean. Chief Dubella's in the room, I'm sure he's gonna speak, and I'd ask him to come up to speak, he said he would speak tonight anyway when the time is right. He and I were on the boardwalk in Point Pleasant. All the parties I just mentioned, and many others, were there in stark opposition of this. It's gonna be a devil of a time, hiring police officers, especially specials. If police can't do their jobs and they can't protect us, and we say as a governing body, we support our police department, we've said we support our schools, we said we support our red night out and our 5K, and we support people in recovery, there's folks here that advocate tonight for people in recovery, then this is something we should easily support. We also supported litigation against the opiate distributor, Purdue Pharma. So this to me is something that we should get behind, even if the governor backwalks some of the treacherous language in the current bill on how our police get treated. That's where I come out in it. If I'm 4-1, I know it's politically unpopular, you heard committee man McDonald say it was 60-40, it might have been 62-37, something like that. I can sleep easy tonight. If people judge me and they don't want me here next year, I can sleep with that, I can rest with that, because I feel like it's just my duty to take and plant a flag. I want to be clear, I'm not bad-mouthing anybody up here. Everybody up here has their own reasons, and I've said good things about the people that are up here, and I'm not gonna backwalk that. It's something I feel passionate about, I was six years as the intoxicated driver resource center director, I was six years in the drug and alcohol unit at Ocean County Health Department, I know about, of which I speak tonight. So that's, sometimes agreeable men can disagree agreeably, but my core beliefs are not like a salami at ShopRite. In other words, I'm not gonna slice a few off to get, go along, Pete, to get along, you know, go along, soften up on the edge, slice a few off, slice it, before you know it, you got nothing left on the slicer. So that's just not me, I take this job seriously, I feel this is a protection issue for our kids, I see our rec director back there, other town fathers and moms in the audience. If people want to judge me, I'm ready to be judged. This is where I come out in it, and I thank my colleagues for the extended time. I'd like to open the floor up to public comment on this issue. Yes, please, please come with a microphone and state your name and address.
Hannah Scanlon. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Lacey Municipal Alliance, and for those, you know, in the public who might not be aware of what we do, I just would like to read our mission statement. "The mission of the Lacey Township Municipal Alliance Committee is to work with the police, schools, community groups, and businesses to provide community members with quality programs which educate our citizens about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco abuse and misuse." I should add marijuana. "Part of this mission also is to provide a coordinated approach to advocacy, collaboration, and education, to promote wellness among all age groups, and to keep individuals and families healthy and safe." So our main focus, of course, is prevention, and especially as it concerns to our youth from experimenting with drugs, tobacco, alcohol. We know that early use and abuse has a greater impact on the developing brain, and you're probably all aware, the studies, recent studies have shown how the human brain does not mature fully until around the mid-20s. Now, some people, this is true, I'm not making it up, it's like 25 for females, it's a little later for males. I won't comment.
Are you insulting us? Better not be talking to you.
There's nothing meant by that, but, and so as you can imagine, we have been really closely following the event since the voters approved the referendum in November to legalize recreational marijuana. But in particular, we're really very concerned about the possibility allowing the sale of recreational marijuana in our community. We feel that this sends a really dangerous message to our youth, that even though marijuana may be legal for people 20 years and older, that it really is very harmful. So at our meeting on Monday night, we passed a motion that said, "We, the Lacey Township Municipal Alliance, as a group, are opposed to any ordinance that would allow the sale of recreational marijuana in Lacey Township," and I should add that that, of course, passed unanimously. Just to sum up, we really feel that the added cost to our police department, as well as the hidden costs for health and social services, far outweighs the benefit that we may benefit from the sale of marijuana in our community. And thank you for allowing us to address the council tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir? Name and address, please.
Paul Russell, 70, Arbor Ridge, Fork River, New Jersey. I too am against it. I grew up in hippie years, as far as stuff in the 60s and 70s. Based on research I've done, as far as stuff, the THC back then was about 1% in the marijuana plant. It's about 11% now, so it's a lot stronger, which would lead you to believe it's gonna lead to other things. I also have a friend, his son works as a teacher in Colorado, so they also got a son that's a policeman out there in the 18th district. They had to hire two additional special detectives, which would add, if we had to do that here, would add additional costs. I could go on and on and on, because I've done some research on it, but I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Ron Martin, 44 Dunbury. I'd just like to voice my opinion. We have a great town. This last past year, last past 18 months, we've had all kinds of housing sales and housing, new housing construction. On the outside, it appears a place to live. We want to ensure that it stays that way, and there should be, in my opinion, no debate as to whether or not we have it or not have it, based on the medical research, based upon social research, based upon an analysis of the towns of Denver and various municipalities of Colorado. It has proven to be a failure, a financial failure. The towns incur needless and tremendous amounts of overtime. So we really have to look at this and the things that we look at in our community. We're at the other end of the time spectrum. Our kids have grown up and they're living all over God's last acre, but we chose to live here. We don't need to be encumbered by the problems that are brought by young people or people of any age to be encountered on the street half in the bag, and not have our police be able to determine whether it's alcohol or drugs. Need a specialist to do that. So I would encourage each and every one of you that this consideration should not be a consideration, should be a flat-out no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, please. Name and address, please.
My name is Donna Calo. I'm the executive director at the Exodus Recovery Community Center. I am also a family recovery support specialist at the Mental Health Association in Ocean County, and I am a mother of sons in long-term recovery. I am here today to give my thoughts on opening recreational marijuana sales in Lacey. I've heard people say, "Why not? There are liquor stores everywhere, how is it any different?" In fact, it's better because it's natural. And yes, you have to be 21 to purchase, but I think we all know that underage drinking is a real problem. Underage smoking will be no different. People who voted yes for legalization are now saying, "Not in my backyard." Well, whose backyard should it be in? I believe both are gateway drugs, that no matter which way people try to spin it to say that it's not true, the experience I have in this field as a mother, a support specialist, as a friend to many people in recovery tells me they are. My sons started using marijuana and alcohol at a very early age. Both went from those gateway substances to pills, club drugs, to heroin, as did many of their peers. Sorry. Thankfully, my sons are in recovery today. One has almost 10 years, the other five and a half, and both are doing amazing work in the field of recovery. Unfortunately, they have lost many friends to addiction. I know some people are seeing revenue for the town, they see how much money these stores can bring to the township, but is anyone looking at how much it will, how much money will be spent on the damages caused by these stores? Currently, marijuana costs $60 for an eighth, $450 for an ounce, and I'm sure recreational will be more expensive. So where will, so will there be more black market sales in the town to undercut the price of stores? Will this bring more dealers to the town, more crime, and more need for more police officers? Will there actually be an increase in revenue for the town, or a greater cost? I've heard many people speak about just how bad the drug problem is in Lacey. I don't believe it is any worse here than in any other town, but what we do have that many towns don't are dedicated people in the Municipal Alliance, the Lacey Task Force, and the Lacey Police Department that have worked so hard these past several years to speak out and bring awareness to the community, to let the residents know how bad the problem is, and we need to work together to fix it. We can't go backwards. We need to work as a community and put our children's well-being ahead of a small percentage of revenue it may generate from these stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Chief.
Before the chief gets up, just want to clarify something about the revenue, because from a state standpoint, it's a good amount of change. From a municipal standpoint, it's 2% on sales, 1% on cultivation. It's not a tremendous amount of money, so just, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there, so that's just one that I wanted to clear up.
Good evening. Michael Dubella, Lacey Township, resident, father, 28 years, law enforcement officer now. You know, back when the conversation originally started, a couple of years back, about even the thought of New Jersey, you know, passing a, you know, sales of recreational marijuana, got very concerned about it, and obviously, it's not something I, you know, I wanted to see. So like anything else, I started looking into it, began speaking to some, you know, other law enforcement officers in different states, one being Colorado, I heard that brought up here tonight, quite a few gentlemen, and during those conversations, I asked, "What, what kind of impacts has it had, you know, on your county? What kind of impacts has it had on your state?" And they just went down a list. Increase, right, in DUIs. I had two kids, you know, both had driver's licenses, and obviously, concerns me, you know. 20 years ago, 30 years ago, we used to worry about drunk drivers on Friday and Saturday nights, right, between 10 and 2, 10 and 3. Now it seems like it's seven days a week, anytime during the day, 8 o'clock in the morning, 8 o'clock at night, it doesn't matter. Now, it's already a concern. But they have seen increases based on the use of recreational marijuana and mixtures with other drugs. But they went on, you know, increased motor vehicle accidents, some fatal, you know, increased fatalities, they talked about increase in violent crime, and obviously, increased use amongst the juvenile population. Again, very concerning to me. Went up on the vote last November, I respect all the voters, voters voting for it. As was said earlier, I believe it was somewhere around 65% of Lacey Township voted for it. Again, respect all the voters. But I find it probably hard to believe that some of them, or quite a few of them, would have known about certain parts of this law. One being, which we spoke about, or some of the gentlemen spoke about already, was the first offense for a juvenile, somebody under 18. I just, never mind as a law enforcement officer, but as a parent, I was very upset by that because, you know, I did everything my can, I could throughout my life to bring my kids up the right way, but obviously, if they're found in possession of alcohol or marijuana, I want to know about it. I really can't think what parent or guardian would want to know about it. As a law enforcement officer, that goes against everything we believe in. You know, we want to get our parents involved for those that are underage, you know, make sure we get them, get them in the right direction. My understanding is there's some legislation that was introduced by, from what I understand, it's on the governor's desk, potentially waiting for his signature to overturn the laws that relates to our juveniles, where a law enforcement officer will be in fact able to tell a parent or guardian. The second part about that, which goes along with that, which I don't believe it's gonna change, at least not right now, is the third-degree charge against a police officer if he violates civil rights related to what I just discussed. So I find it, you know, probably hard to believe that, you know, people that voted for that knew about these types of things. As I said, I believe the juvenile part with telling the parents can be overturned, I'm not so sure about the second part, as it relates. I think everybody knows me, most people in here know me, I love this town. I absolutely love Lacey Township. I've been here, I think I was thinking about it earlier, for about 34, 35 years. I respect everybody that's come up to the microphone tonight, that's provided their opinion about it, everybody up here that's spoken about it. Me, personally, as a father, a resident, I don't want to see retail sales in our community. And that's just how, how I feel about it, and thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to me? Sir? Name and address.
Skip Peters, Fork River. My apologies, you came in all late. Committee man McDonald was discussing possibly tabling this tonight, is that correct? Getting some more information?
Yeah, I think we do need to get some more information.
I got a question, do we have the power tonight to abolish this now, tonight, so does we move forward? And I'll tell you why. In 19 years, I worked in a school district, and I worked the alternative school, and I built your food bank, and our school was in the back. I had all the kids, at-risk students, whether it be drugs, problems at home, whatever it was. I'm 55 years old, been to about six funerals with my friends, and I'm at that age where I'm starting to lose them, unfortunately, at some a young age. But I've been to 19 funerals of ex-students that I had that started off with marijuana, leading into something else. What is the profit margin, we're possibly gonna get revenue out of this if we do pass it? How much money are we looking at?
We're looking at 1% in the other states, 1% of the general tax revenue. Oregon, California, Nevada, Colorado, it's a total of 1%.
Do we have like possible numbers, like on sales, what it's actually gonna bring in? No. No. All right. As a private citizen, I don't want this town to be known coming in to purchase marijuana. I want this town to be known for our beautiful parks, I want this town to be known for Float Down at the Second Lake there, Widget, what's the name of it? I'm sorry.
Wedditt.
Wedditt, I can't remember the name of it, I'm so sorry. That's a beautiful thing we have there, we have revenue coming in there, all right? If we want to do something to bring more income to the town, or do something, let's build something that people come here to enjoy. Let's build a bubble for the recreation department. We have enough property somewhere to put a bubble up, an indoor bubble like the Avon Tombs River, where our recreation people, township people use it for free, and then we charge a fee to come in for something like that. I'd rather have somebody come to town, more positive thing like that, than a negative aspect of the other one. If you guys have the power tonight to abolish it, let's do it. I don't know who's for it, who's for it, it's none of my business, but let's look at it, get it off the plate, you got enough people here against it, let's get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the floor?
Seeing that, most of the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll say one final word, and that is, you know, we hear this two weeks from now, four weeks from now, six weeks from now, nobody's here, you'll know where people stand when they vote. Right now, it's committee man McKenna and me. I need one more person to step up and vote no, and have a prohibition ordinance. See how people, and watch what you see, watch how people vote, and then you'll, then you'll know where people stand.
I would recommend-
Halfway, that's it.
I'd still recommend tabling for tonight.
Oh, I understand that, but, you know, if we vote on it two or four weeks from now, when nobody's here, I mean, I don't want that to happen either, and I will let the town know when we're gonna have a vote.
Mr. Curtis, mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you this, when we do vote two, four weeks from now, I'll make sure I know all of these people, I'll call them personally and let them know how I voted. How's that? Okay?
That's great. No further? Close that meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Township of Lacey Township meeting, March 25th, 2021. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Law 75. Said notice was advertised in Asbury Park Press, and a beacon was posted in the bulletin board showing the time and place. We salute the flag, our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendment number one, Resolution 2021-103, awarding contract for the purchase of auto parts.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of auto parts to advance fastener industries Barlow Automotive, Barlow, Buick GMC, Beechhaven Automotive, doing businesses Beechhaven Auto Parts, Campbell Freightliner, Chapman Ford Sales, Gabrielle Kenworth of New Jersey, and Grand Turk Equipment. This is through the Stafford Township Co-op. There's about 33 members, and this is a contract that goes until April of 2023. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Resolution 2021-104, amendment with temporary operating budget.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, providing for emergency temporary operating budget in accordance with the provisions of NJS A48,4-20. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Amendment number four, Resolution 2021-106, authorizing refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Amendment number five, Resolution 2021-107, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $749,538.22.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Amendment number five, Resolution 2021-107, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $749,538.22.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Amendment number six, motion approved township meeting minutes of March 11th, 2021.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved caucus meeting minutes of March 11th, 2021.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment number eight, motion approved application for Raymond Van Martyr for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment number nine, motion approved raffle license application for Grand Order Protective Order of Alps, Lacey Alps.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment number ten, motion approved bingo license amendment for the Lacey Alps.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a, if you don't mind.
Apologies. No, I'm sorry.
Um, it's Resolution 109, it's Resolution Township, Lacey County, motion to adjourn to New Jersey, authorizing an amendment to the CARES Act reimbursement agreement with the county motion. The initial agreement that we signed with, related to the CARES Act and reimbursements that we are entitled to for qualified expenditures expired December 31st, 2020, it is being extended through December 31st of 2021. So I just need to do an amendment to that resolution with that agreement with the county.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. McKness?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
And Mayor Curtis.
Yes.
That's all I have, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess tonight was a, a good thing because you, everybody, it's great to see people come to this township meeting, because half of the time, in a number of meetings, I don't think we had one person here. And this is a great thing, and I said it many years ago. The only way you get something done is to come out and voice your opinion. So I'm real proud of everybody for coming out, and, and like I said, there, there was people that felt different ways, but I could tell you this, I'm a straightforward man. I'll tell you how I vote on it, and I'll tell you right to the face of how I vote on it. So there's no holding back, and I'll let you know on that one. Since the chief is here, you know, there's not too many things, I don't go on Facebook, I don't, I think I have a Facebook account that my wife monitors for me and maybe puts some things.
She's on there enough for you, don't worry about it.
So I, I don't go on there, as people know, but there's a few things that she lets me know about, and, you know, I, I see things that, you know, we do not realize, I think a lot of things in this town, we take for granted. And, and one particular thing really hit me. A lot of people have a lot of bad things to say about Lacey Township Police Department, how they do things. And then I, I read things on Lacey Chatter, I don't read that at all, so my wife forwarded it to me, and, and it caught me, and it involved Lacey Township Police Department, and I'd like to read it if I could.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank Chief DiBella and the Lacey Township Police Department for being so wonderful to, to my son. My son Jason has had a rough year and has always inspired to be a police officer. He even made his Pinewood Derby car a Lacey Police Department car.
Yeah, this is cute.
They invited him to come by the station, social distance, of course, and checked out the patrol car, turned on the siren, and even speak to in the PAC system. They made my boy so happy, and he hasn't stopped talking about it and how cool it was. So again, thank you, chief, and Lacey Township Police Department. Your time and kind words have made my little boy's year. That's, that's pretty, you know, coming from a law enforcement family and having my mother in it, I, I know a lot of things that, that police get hammered with and things, but I could tell you something, chief, and I'm going to say it right here while you're here. I think you do a great job with that police department. They utmost to do things like this as things that, you know, on top of the problems we have in, in this world with this recreational marijuana and everything, your, your police department and you go over and above to make a little boy like that happy. I want to commend you, and please commend the rest of the police department for me, please. And, and then, you know, we, we go on, and, you know, there was pictures of the Pinewood, the gallon in the Pinewood Derby, and it's the Lacey Township Police Cars, and this is great. These are things I like, so. How can I put this? There's a lot of things I think about, I think of different things in, in different ways. This recreational marijuana has, has touched me in different ways, and as people know, you know, at, at one time, and I said this many a time, one time alcohol was illegal during prohibition. And yes, I am in the, in that business, I run the Spirits Unlimited, I'm proud to say that, but we, we run a very good ship down there. I mean, there's a lot of things that I've checked before, and I could say this, we haven't had one, since I've been there in eight years, we haven't had one violation for anything to do with the ABC. So we're proud of that, we stay on top of things. And I feel what you're talking about when it comes to the marijuana. I don't know too much about the marijuana end of it, but maybe when I was a kid, and I won't lie to anybody and say that I didn't try it when I was a kid, but I guess I turned my different ways because I had a mother that was the chief of police, and then I had a father that was a police officer. So I guess maybe they, you know, kept me in line. But I feel for you, and, and believe me, I'll tell you, I will vote the right way on that one. And then, you know, I, I read on, and, and different things that people do in this town. To come out and, and be together and voice your opinion, I'm here to listen to everybody's opinion. When I heard that it did pass, that vote passed by 67%, it floored me. I, I, you know, I knew in the state of New Jersey, it was going to be pretty high, but when I read Lacey, I just said, and, and I think I'm, I'm starting to believe what everybody feel here, I don't think nobody really knew what it was about. And I still don't know what it's about, because I have no idea what Governor Murphy's going to put across his desk the next time. But I could tell you this, if it makes you feel any better, he's running out of time. And, and I, I truthfully believe that, you know, I, I'm hoping down the road that people are smart to get him out of office, and let's put somebody in there that I feel can make a big difference and make Jersey a better place. Other than that, Mayor, I think, I just want to thank again Lacey Township Police, Public Works Department for the great job. I know I said last week, and Mark, he said to me, don't say too much, but I think spring is here, bud.
No, I said that too. You called it right, you called it right. I said, I said, don't jinx us. That's right.
I think spring is here, I think, so, so please, you know, the kids are going to be out of school, watch the driving around town, please, you know, just keep an eye on the kids are going to be out playing around, and, and I know the parks are going to start getting a lot of use starting now, so. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry, I took a lot of time.
You were a little worried tonight. You were a little worried. Been hanging out with Peter?
No, you did good. Yeah, I think you just assured that there's going to be three inches or four inches snow to melt.
Nah, it's going to be good.
Wash isn't over.
Yeah, yeah.
Committee McDyckoff?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of little announcements I'd like to make about some goings on in Lacey Township. Number one, press release, DEP awards $16 million to enhance local government recycling programs, and Lacey will be receiving $59,716.16 for the recycling tonnage grant they filed in 2018. Their worst government, this doesn't work, we're announced, following press release. We, we receive periodic updates from Hull Tech about the goings on and, and their, their progress. So this comes from Jeff Dossel, who is the site vice president. Good morning, decommissioning of Oyster Creek continues with the critical path of moving spent fuel to the dry storage as a focus. Last week, we placed spent fuel systems 13 and 14 in the independent spent fuel storage pad and processed canister 15. We will be transferring canisters 15 and 16 to the pad this week and processed canisters 17 and 33. So there are, this puts them at the halfway point in the campaign. They continue to focus on safety in the campaign and methodically move towards progress. The original schedule had all spent fuel in dry storage based on progress to be completed by June. Team continues developing demolition plans and is actively working on the waste surge tank. We expect that effort to be complete this week pending miller conditions. The NRC inspector is on site this week observing the dry fuel storage process. We are also facilitating a site tour of local law enforcement, I'm guessing that's you, chief, and officer emergency management from the county in Thomas River this Wednesday. As always, respectfully, Jeff. So it's nice to get these updates, and whenever we get them, I'll pass them along to everyone else. I, I do spend a lot of time on Facebook and Lacey Chatter, and to tell you the truth, I don't hear a lot of negativity about the police department, our township, anything. For, I mean, listen, you can't, no, I don't like saying you can't make everyone happy, but you can tell who just isn't a happy person. I mean, just some people are not happy. But at any rate, with that in mind, what I hear about is, when the heck is Route 9 going to be paved? So, so basically, we do have an update. So Rob Vasco and Casey Parker met with Jim Cuxton from Grace Supply and the paving contract to discuss two upcoming restoration projects as it relates to Route 9 gas name replacement project. The first will involve the removal of the old concrete slab along a portion of Route 9 at the intersection of Lacey Road approximately 1,000 feet of roadway. This work will occur during the evening hours, begin approximately March 18th. That's right. Okay, March 18th, sorry. 2021 will continue for four consecutive nights. Traffic plan will have all necessary signage and traffic control devices in place, and our police are scheduled to assist. The second area is the paving restoration of Route 9 from Lacey Road North to our township line at Berkeley Township. The plan is to begin this work in the middle or towards the end of April, which will involve the milling and paving overlay of the northbound lane of Route 9 from its center line to gutter line. Grace Supply indicated that the state will follow up to do the southbound side at some point in the future. Casey and Rob did discuss our plans with the two roadways that we have on our list, specifically first roadway, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, so be assured, Route 9 is, is, is getting paved, and, and that's going to extend, for those of you who travel north to Berkeley, that will extend to there.
Actually, will this extend all the way up through Lighthouse Drive and Beachwood?
Yes. Okay. We discussed tonight this marijuana legislation. I'm not saying I'm for, I'm not saying I'm against, I'm saying that I, I like to gather all the information prior to making an educated decision. I know some people get emotional, I try not to be emotional. I see the positives and negatives. Some, some of the negatives, of course, are something, things that the folks, fine folks here and the chief talk about. Some of the positives would be maybe the convenience. I know that there was a contentious amongst the, the members up here about medicinal marijuana, and bringing the medicinal marijuana dispensary or zoning it in the Lacey Business Park. And again, I, I follow social media, and my rationale for being in favor of that was the convenience of people, because right now, people are having to go to Newark or Atlantic City, or they're having to travel. Listen, you know, it just, again, I, I like people to be, to remain in the safety of Lacey Township. But again, you will know how I vote, and you know why I vote the way I vote. Never believe me, anyone who's seen me up here for over 18 years knows I'm not shy about my opinions.
Okay.
Well, sometimes.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Committeeman. Committeeman McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me talk a little about the sign that's behind us. It's the 150th, which was, I think, what day was that, Veronica, the actual 150th?
23rd.
The 23rd, we actually turned 150. And as you can imagine, COVID threw a wrench into the plans, but Jim is recovering. Would that be a proper word, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. So we're recovering with that, and we got some great things going on. I know that Mr. Juliano has indicated that Spirits is going to get involved with the 150th. As to what, we're not quite sure yet. But if you like Charms Coffee, and I do, they're going to come out with their own 150th brew. So, and we're talking to restaurants about creating 150th cocktails. So things of this nature are going on, and I would tell you to go to Facebook page 150th for all the events, call the recreation department, they'll be happy to send them out to you. It's going to be a great time. The police department, I met with the chief this afternoon, we went over a few things. His big concern, it's a concern of mine, is the Dunkin' Donuts on.
I was, I was told by a resident to stop, that you and Mr. Juliano must stop banging on the dais, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Did I interrupt you? No, you didn't. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So let me get, let me get back to the Dunkin' Donuts on Lacey Road. Let me give you a little bit of a history on that. That was actually approved in 2013, and it didn't get built until 2015 for the simple reason that the same owner owns the new Dunkin' Donuts down in Barnagat, as you come off owner owns the new Dunkin' Donuts down in Barnegat as you come off the Parkway there. And they were building that, so it didn't get built. It's been open for a couple of years now. We firmly believe, I firmly believe, that the problem is there, and I talked to the chief about addressing him today, is, you know, we're going to start ticketing people. I've told him, start ticketing people. They know not to hold up the traffic. I get it. But the real problem was the other Dunkin' Donuts on Lacey Road, on Route Nine, they did a rehab and they closed down completely. So everyone was coming over there and with COVID, I don't blame you, who wants to get out of the car if they don't have to for a cup of coffee? So we're going, we're going to start working on that and hopefully that's going to start next week where we start, he's been giving out warnings. Again, it's too much. There's going to be somebody, there's going to be, we haven't had that many accidents down there and I'm not sure how that works, but we we got to start because we are going to get a serious accident down there, okay? And I'm going to reach out to the owner and see if we can't work on something with that. Let me address the marijuana issue. This is a tough subject. Because when you have, you know, if you look, go back and look at the voters, Nick got, I'm sorry, Committeeman Giuliano got twelve thousand votes. Twelve thousand, that's, I think that's the most ever in Lacey Township. And you had sixty-three percent of the people vote for recreational marijuana. I get it. If this had been a fifty-one, forty-nine, this is a no brainer. But when you have almost two-thirds of those who voted who want recreational marijuana, we as politicians, we got to listen to our constituency. And I get it. There was thirty-six percent who said no. We got to listen to them too. But we got away with the citizens of this town want. Now, how am I going to vote? I have no idea. I've always been on the fence on recreational marijuana. I grew up in the seventies, high school and college through the seventies. So I've seen a lot, all right? Medicinal, I have been for for a very long time. I, you know, when I went in the seventies, it was the glaucoma and everything else like that, which might, you know, I knew people that had those problems and a lot of other problems. Medicinal marijuana, I have absolutely no problem for. As Mr. Dykoff has said, inside of Lacey Township, not a problem. But the recreational side of this, I don't think it's as cut and dry as everyone thinks it is. And I get where you, the people here, you guys are against it and God bless you. And like Nick said, I think it's great and he's right. Sometimes we get nobody that comes out here. But there's another side to this. And that's the sixty-three percent that said, yes, they would like it. So whether we put it in here in Lacey or not, that's, we're moving now, we're going to get the facts. But I do not think that we need to make sure that that law protects Lacey's finest, that I want our police to be able to do their job. Period. That's number one. Number two, I want the parents of these kids to be notified. You know, the chief said it. Who wouldn't? Thank God my kids are older now, but my fifteen-year-old son is smoking marijuana and gets, you know, the cops come to my door and say, you know what? Mr. McDonald, we caught your son smoking marijuana. I don't think he's going to sit down for about a month.
Or drink it.
Or drink it or anything like that, you know? I mean, it's just, you know, it's the same story that I went through, we all went through. So give us a chance. We'll weigh it and you will know how I vote and the reason why I vote the way I vote. It's as simple as that. And I think that's the best way of doing it. So with that being said, Mayor?
Thank you, Committeeman. Committeeman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, just touching on the Dunkin' Donuts, you know, I spoke to the chief as well, I said, ticket, said, Nick, hand out tickets. And everybody knows you should not be stopping in Lacey Road for a coffee. I mean, let's face it. Since this is roughly the first anniversary of COVID, I figured I'd give everybody a COVID update. Not that they want to hear one, but my two cents on so of COVID, since I was mayor all last year and I, you know, largely presided over the township's response to COVID. So there's, the population of the U.S. is roughly three hundred and thirty million. It's ten percent, roughly ten percent of contracted coronavirus, death rate of one point eight percent, roughly five hundred, forty-five thousand people have died from it. I personally do know people that have died from COVID personally. And I still maintain then, as I do now, that businesses should be open and schools should be open, fully open. And the, now that they're finally rolling out the vaccine, it should be available to all. I don't think that should be picking and choosing who gets it. It should be available to all because they're starting to have problems where people are signing up for the for the vaccine and then not showing up for, to get the vaccine. So now they, these are spots that are being taken up in line that could be easily filled by somebody that really wants it. And do, since this is an election year and and Phil Murphy is running for governor, I'm I'm probably going to remind everybody, because it's, hypocrisy still bothers me to this day. He made mention in yesterday's press conference about a maskless protest. I don't know whether it's true or not, he talked about it. And Freehold Mall is going to have a, somebody was trying to organize a maskless protest at Freehold Mall. And he was, you know, referred to him as knuckleheads and, you know, usual stuff. But I want to remind everybody that in last, it was April or May, at the absolute peak of coronavirus hysteria, where the rules were, the lockdown rules were in full force. You were, had to wear a mask. Groups were, you weren't allowed a group of, I think, even outdoors, no more than ten people or twenty-five, really restrictive rules. I want to remind everybody that the governor participated in a protest outside with hundreds of people maskless. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's it's really democracy in action. I appreciate you coming out and I think you heard all the colleagues up here say the same thing, we can have an exchange of ideas. That's important. I would just caution everyone, I don't think that vote would have been sixty-three percent to the affirmative if people really knew what was in the bill. The bill notwithstanding, even if the governor changes some language, to be frank, it still sucks. I'm going to be a no vote. I'm not afraid of political ramifications. I did hear my colleagues to my left say that they were for it a couple of weeks ago. I'm glad they may be reconsidering. I think it's good to weigh in all the options. So with that, I do want, we recognized Mr. Parker a couple of weeks ago. We have another person who was mayor in our town in nineteen seventy-six during our bicentennial, Mr. Scanlon. So I want to say, Ed, thank you for for being here tonight. You were a good guy in seventy-six. I was only eight. If I would have run into you, I probably would have been afraid of you. I'm still a little afraid of you. But thank you for your service. You've always been a good guy. You come from a good family, so thank you for that. I've been on the governor's conference call with Atlantic and Cape May Counties. All the mayors get an opportunity to speak. I took the tact that you get a little farther with sugar than you do horseradish. So before jumping all over the place, I bit my tongue, I was judicial about it. So I got to try to get something for our township. So I always let the mayor, Tom's River, go first because he's good. He's a good dude, strong leader, advocates well for his town. And that's Mayor Mo Hill. And I will tell you that I really was in line with what he was saying. I can only hope that the governor's aides listen to us because everything my colleagues are saying up here about businesses being shuttered and mental health issues, the kids in school is all true. And it's time for the people that are in the mental health and social work field to be speaking up and not let the natural health people just ride the day, the medical health people, I mean. COVID, yeah, it's dangerous, right? But the mental health people need to be speaking up and have some of that narrative too. The medical people can't control the entire agenda. So I have been advocating for us on these calls. One headline that I saw, so I'll give a brief COVID update. Of course, my phone is locked again, but, okay, U.S. to send millions of COVID vaccines to Mexico and Canada. Okay, so, I mean, this is just failed leadership. You know, my grandmother used to tell me, you can be charitable, charity starts at home. There's people right here in this town that need that vaccine. And not for giving away our academic, of course, we came up with the vaccine. Who the hell else is going to do it? We're Americans, we're exceptional. Of course, we came up with it. I knew we would. Several of our companies did. And it should stay here with us first. Our seniors should be after suffer ins traction on a door to try to get it into their arms. To that end, we started giving vaccines on December twenty-fourth. To date, the county health department has given out seventy-two thousand to our six-hundred and seven thousand Ocean County residents. But that's not the whole story. Hackensack Murray, Hackensack Meridian Health and RWG Barnabas have also given out some vaccines and a couple of chain drugstores have too. It's probably a little over a hundred thousand, still not enough, but we're making inroads. I'm hoping we're going to be at herd immunity by Memorial Day weekend for the sake of our business and our tourism. God knows we need it. With that, I'll open a Florida public comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, committee. One thirteen, Amber Miss Way, Joe Bransford. I'm wondering if the committee can share with us the two-point-nine million that's heading our way? I hope it gets here quicker than the eighteen thousand that Committeeman Dykoff reported on in twenty eighteen.
Go like this, go.
Just any thoughts at this point as to how that would be utilized?
I have some information on that. I was on a conference call at Congressman Kim's office. In that number, originally, the low-end number was supposed to be five-point-three million. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. And not, probably not ironically and not surprisingly, we as a municipality and every other municipality has no recourse to contest that award. Therefore, we have that award, but in that award is the fourteen-hundred-dollar checks that go out to everybody. The vast majority of that two-point-seven million is going to be absorbed by our people who make seventy-five thousand dollars or less or one hundred and fifty in a household in the aggregate. That's going to take up a lot of that. The municipality at this point right now is going to have very little of that. School going to have even less. That's unfortunate. Yes, it will hit our economy. Some of it will find its way into the market. I'm sure a lot of it will find its way into German butcher and that's a good thing. It's one of our great businesses. But I would like to offer the taxpayers some relief. And if we had some of that, we would be able to. It's not totally shot, it's not totally over. I'm on conference calls at federal level, governor's level, Congressman Kim's level. I'll keep everybody informed. I keep an open line of communication with my colleagues. And feel free to call me here on my cell phone or email Veronica. If you have a question, I'll have an answer for you.
Yeah, we're waiting for some guidance out of the state D C A as to when it will be distributed. It's only, if it goes from the federal government to the state, the state will filter it. To us, we're only going to get about fifty percent upfront. Unfortunately, it cannot be used for tax relief though. Not allowed to be used for tax relief, so. It has to be used for COVID-related matters and also infrastructure projects, those kind of things. It cannot go into the, any of the pension funds. So the state is going to be developing guidance on how that we have to use it. If any towns took out any COVID relief bonds, Lacey Township did not, they have to be paid back first. So we did not take out relief bonds for that. And then if, we have to expend the money that we receive by two thousand and twenty-four and then we could be audited and have to be given the funds back if we don't properly spend it.
One final note. Senator Connors just informed me something about the bill that's on the governor's desk with regard to recreational, about notification. Chris, if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor. As pointed out by Committeeman McDonald and Dykoff and other members of the committee, just today, legislation was passed to address some of the enforcement issues that were raised by the original bill S thirty-five, thirty-four, which addressed the lack of enforcement with regard to cannabis possession or use by kids under eighteen years of age. Unfortunately, the bill passed the Senate about four and a half hours ago. I believe it passed the Assembly because I'm hearing it's on the governor's desk. They were still in session when I left Trenton. But the bill really, it was one of, I was sad to vote for it from the standpoint that it was the right thing to do in terms of requiring notification to parents when someone under eighteen was caught with possession or use of cannabis or alcohol. Sadly, however, I really wanted to vote against it because the bill is still a bad bill. And it's a bad bill because there are no provisions with regard to the requirement of the notification. In other words, how notification is to be made to the parent? Is it going to be by mail? There's no requirement that it be by certified mail. So if the police department mails a notice to the parents, there's a likelihood that it may not even reach the parents. If the child gets home before the parents get home, you can see where that letter's going to go.
I would not do that.
So there are still a lot of things lacking in the notification requirement under, under this bill. And as pointed out, you know, additionally, police departments are going to be in a very precarious position because they cannot detain a child under eighteen years of age. They cannot put them in a police car, they cannot drive them to the police station, they cannot detain them any longer than what it takes to find out who they are and if they're underage. But to do so in violation is a deprivation of civil rights, as the chief has pointed out, subjecting that police officer to a two-C violation, third degree crime, which could lead to the loss of that police officer's job. So understand that if a police officer unintentionally detains, because they don't know the age of the person there, longer than what it might be necessary, and that could be argued later on, that kid essentially goes free and the police officer loses his job. And the town gets sued on the same token. So you can expect increased lawsuits. Smoking it, possessing it is no longer probable search, they cannot be searched, they cannot give consent of search. So if a police officer by accident asks, can I search? Yes, and search it, it's a violation of deprivation of civil rights and that police officer is in a lot of trouble. And so what is going to happen, in my view, as a result of this legislation and the fact that they failed to address the provisions of enforcement for underage children, is that was pointed out by, I think, some of the individuals that came to the mic today, is that you have a possibility with, through the regulation of the state, of the cannabis industry, that the market prices will increase over a period of time, where then the black market will then become more prominent. Kids are going to be used as drug mules because a police officer is not going to be able to search the car the driver, the seventeen-year-old kid is going to be packing marijuana and anything else in that car. And that car will not be able to be searched by a police officer happens to stop it on a motor vehicle violation and even smells marijuana coming from the car, it will not be probable cause to search that car. Kid sitting on the beach with a cooler full of alcohol, not going to be able to search it if they're under eighteen years of age. And so the enforcement problems are going to be numerous. The financial, potential financial consequences of any charges in the deprivation of civil rights could lead to municipalities having to defend these lawsuits. And so the bill that's on the governor's desk is more or less window dressing, in my view. It's not going to address the problem of, of the issue of underage marijuana. There were members of the legislature who indicated, in fact, the sponsor of the bill today was one who admitted that, didn't realize that that was a provision in the bill, because the bill was two hundred and forty pages long, just on legalization of the marijuana alone, plus the additional decriminalization parts of the bill. And so that was lost. But they had time to fix it and it's still not being fixed. So anybody walking away thinking that we solved the problem with regard to the underage and parent notification, I think we have another thing coming to us. So we have to be, Committeeman McDonald's absolutely right, there's a lot that has to be learned about this legislation. There's still a lot that's still being learned by the legislation. And my guess is, is when this bill is thoroughly vetted by the people, not by the legislature that just passed it, they're going to find that there are a lot of infirmities in the bill that doesn't address the real problem facing our police department. That should have been an integral part of the bill. That's the part that I would have liked to have voted no, but the fact is, the first thing that was available is the, is the notification. So it moved the, you know, the bar a little bit further, but it didn't address the, the real problems with the enforcement. So that's the report of the legislation as it is today.
I did not know that. You were there today, I wasn't? Any other comments?
Yeah, I got.
Yes, sir.
With regards to this two-point-eight million or whatever we're going to get, and I wouldn't hold my breath on that either. That, it's, it's mind-boggling to me that the, because every one of us up here is screaming at the top of our lungs to support these local businesses during this COVID. Get out there. And now, the towns that didn't do that, that had high unemployment, are going to get more money than the towns with lower unemployment who help take care of themselves. This is bizarre. It's incentives not to work. You know, and I, I can always remember, you know, I was eleven years old, my older brother was off to college. We got about a three-foot snow. At five o'clock in the morning, my father came in and said, you know what? There's a driveway out there that needs to be shoveled. So you better go shovel it. And I came back in about an hour later and he says, what are you doing in here? And I said, well, get some breakfast. He goes, go make, go make some money and go knock on doors and, and I made about fifty dollars. This is back in the late sixties. And I've been working ever since. And I, for the life of me, I can't understand why people would incentivize not working. It just doesn't make sense. And that really, really bothers me. And I have criticized Trenton enormously. I've criticized our governor, my wife refers to him as Governor Wingnut. And now, and now, what we got going on down in Washington, D.C. is an unbelievable disgrace. It's just craziness what's going on. So all I would tell people is support, support these businesses. Keep supporting them and, and we're going to get through this somehow. And vote in November because it's gonna have to count. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As much as I like you, Committeeman McDonald, I think you were absent for the class in college, Blue State. college, Blue State Building 101. Because everything you just talked about is, that's, that's where we're at. Reward, lethargy, and the hard-working people get their award cut in half. Ms. Joan Topping turned 80 today.
Oh, thank you.
Listen, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but we have, this, I'm going to tell you something about Veronica. She knows if a stone is turned somewhere on Center Street at 3:00 in the morning on a February Tuesday, anytime you got to know anything, you just pick up, call her. Trenton, I'm not going to give you a cell phone now.
Please don't.
I call her Lady Lacy because there's nothing she doesn't know. How she knew that? Don't, don't, no. The mystery I want to keep alive.
Okay, keep the mystery alive.
Anyone else for the good of the order?
Jean, I'm mostly close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
A resident of Township Lacy County, state of Jersey, authorized convenia of the executive session to discuss matters of personnel and matters of contracts.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Tip, McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtall?
Yes.